Yes.
Okay.
This is the city of. Hello and welcome, everyone. This is the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee. Hybrid meeting called to order on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at one oh two P M. Um, let's go ahead and start roll call for an equitable experience. Please announce your name before commenting. This helps blind and visually impaired know who is speaking. And I will begin the roll call here in chambers. Starting, starting with Stephanie.
Hi, this is Stephanie Utzman. Um, she her pronouns and I have long brown curly hair. I wear glasses and I'm wearing a pink dress.
This is, excuse me, this is Liz Deetha Martin. I go by she her pronouns. I'm a white woman with dark unruly hair and a black T shirt. There you go.
This is Amanda Hammer in council chambers. Um, I have reading glasses on my head and my graying hair is pulled up in a bun. I'm a white Caucasian woman, go by she her pronouns.
For those online.
Oh, go. Hi, this is Carl Burnett. I am calling in from Maine today. I am wearing a black T shirt and glasses, he him pronouns. Hi, everyone.
You there?
Uh, this is Eric Rivers. I use he him pronouns. I have short gray and brown hair with a black T shirt. And I'm online today.
This is Whitney Bennett. I use she her pronouns and a white woman with light colored hair tied up today. I'm coming to you all online and I'm wearing a tan shirt. My camera may be off a lot just because my connection is not amazing. I'm calling from the coast today.
Glad you made it. Anybody else online?
Hey, this is John Halen calling from uh my house. I had a plumbing emergency, so I had to call in.
Thanks for being here. Think we have a Lisa?
Yep. Um, white woman, she her, got blonde hair and you can't see it, but I'm wearing a blue T shirt.
We're glad everyone is here. My name is Liz Woodfin. I'm here in council chambers. Chair of Quebec. I'm a white woman with blonde hair and blue eyes. And I'm wearing a tan colored cardigan with a green um dress. Yeah, um, let's go ahead and um move on to um the City of Bend land acknowledgement. Uh, do I have a volunteer to read this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Testing, testing my smudgy glasses here. This is Liz Deetha Martin. Oh, there it is. Beautiful. We, in English, we would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to north to the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Monalama, Warm Springs, Wasco, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to know that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Solilo Falls uh trading grounds. This trading road expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thank you, Liz. All right, let's go ahead and move into the approval of the June twenty six uh twenty twenty five draft minutes. Are there any corrections to the June twenty six, twenty twenty five meeting minutes?
Uh, this is John. I just have a question. That seems like the format for the minutes has changed and there's a lot more detail. Have we had a policy change as far as how minutes are taken?
There was a lot involved at the last meeting, a lot.
Yeah, there was. I was just like, yeah, I was reviewing it and it was quite the list. So, thanks.
Thanks, Lisa, for undertaking that big effort.
Yes.
There were a lot of questions in it is the reason why.
Um, I had one note. Uh, let's see on the top. Well, it depends on how you print it, but uh perhaps the top of page four. Uh, under the discussion about the bus, I'm actually not finding it.
Hell, this is the agenda.
Oh, right. Oh, you're just giving me that note. Um, uh, Liz Woodfin was talking about the form for um uh discounted or or reduced fare for the buses. And I think uh invasive was the uh intended word instead of evasive.
Yeah, I believe that was um in reference to the Dial-A-Ride application.
Okay. Yeah, I will leave that down today and send it back up.
Thank you. Um, any other corrections noted? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve uh the uh June minutes uh with the updates just mentioned?
This is Amanda Hammer. All a motion to approve.
This is Stephanie. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sounds good. Um, motion carries. Um, thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Stephanie. Unanimously unanimously approved with the update. Um, let's go ahead and move into public comment.
There's no one online? Anyone in the gallery? No.
No, okay. Um, we will go ahead and move into the City of Bend website up update um Quebec preview and we welcome Jacob Riggle.
Thank you, everyone. Let me share my screen here. Comment. Sorry. Let me try that again. There we go. So, yeah, again, hi, everybody. Um, thanks for having me here today too. Um, my name is Jacob Riggle. I'm a white male, uh brown hair, wearing a uh navy blue and white. I suppose it's like a golf tee. Uh, and I'm joined online by Carrie Dodd, um web and graphics coordinator. And um in the audience, Ken Bonchi, a project manager for this project. Um, I'm a UX designer here at the city. And wanted to run through the work we're doing for the website redesign. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to advance the slides here. There. Okay, it's just a little delayed. So a couple of goals for today. One, I wanted to share these new designs. We've been working with um a design firm out of Boulder, Colorado, Moxie Sozo, to help redesign our website. And um wanted to talk about some of the WICAG informed or web content accessibility guidelines, informed design decisions that we're making for the site. And then kind of more importantly, I want to hear from you all to see if there's anything that we've missed, kind of what are your some some of your concerns? Kind of just issues with the current site and things that you would like to see included in the new site. So um on the left here, we have the homepage as it is today. And then on the right, this is the homepage as it will look coming um at the end of January. Two, so again, we want to just kind of walk through some of those those high level um kind of design decisions. Um, in particular, uh color and contrast, um typography and readability, layout and structure, icons and imagery, and then language and content. So with that, I will hop over into the kind of prototyping tool that we're using and I guess I'm not sharing my whole screen, so bear with me again. As I switch. See this? Okay. So as you can see, there's a little bit of animation at first. One thing I will point out, that second piece, this is just for just to show how things will move. Again, this is just a prototyping tool. But it's just indicating what this um behavior will look like as you move between slides. But on initial open, those you saw those initial circles were kind of all lined up. They'll shift around. And then the um the search bar up at the top is going to show up and expand to just that's that's one kind of visual piece or way um to help draw attention to that. So for sighted users, at least that'll that'll be one one place to help draw attention to a really key way to navigate the site. Overall, um some things that I want to point out too that we really were trying to bring into this is more like less clutter, making it easier for users to see um and 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 um understand what what's being presented on the site. So there's not a lot of distraction there. Um, for color and contrast, we're working with our design partners um to ensure that there's adequate contrast between text and background. So maintaining uh like a three to one ratio for large text or four and a half um to one for small text right now. And also not relying solely on color to convey a meaning. So for links or whatever, there'll there'll be other ways to present that content, just to make sure that it's clear for everyone there.
So so these would be, these colors might be tweaked then.
Yeah, we've actually been working with them. I can see on screen. It looks like some of these don't.
I was gonna say the water bill.
Yeah, there's not a lot of contrast.
Yeah.
Up there.
Right. Yeah. And so this is, so this is, that's a great, yeah, a great thing to point out. This is again kind of the prototyping tool and it's showing kind of the user, the behavior, like when you hover over a particular piece. So by default, when you first come to it, they're all going to be the black color. But then as you hover over each one, that one is just going to stay black. The rest of them are going to fade out too. So for um, so it's going to just help draw more attention to that specific piece that you're on. So I think like that can help people with like ADHD too, with a kind of more focus focus navigation there.
Why were there people that are shaking?
Uh huh, okay.
Right, right. Between the two, I mean, like.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good call. Okay. So one thing then, yeah, we'll we'll make a note. I have Kenny here um taking notes. Um, and well, the recording obviously too. But um, yeah, that's a good thing to call out that we hadn't thought about. Would perhaps like making sure that there's enough space in between those those links address that issue.
There are all kinds of manual dexterity issues, you know, someone's cerebral palsy, etc.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. Paralysis, you know, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is exactly why I'm, you know, I'm glad we're here today to hear, you have these other considerations that, yeah, yeah. Um.
And that Amanda, would that be, would that, would a fix for that be state, like adding space? I don't, I don't know, like.
I don't think it would because you've got all kinds of movement issues, started dyskinesia, you know, you know, Parkinson's, you have, you know, just things.
Yeah.
But I mean, unless you.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be hard to fix all things, man.
Right.
But what would be a good, yeah.
Um, a lot of times tabbing or tabbing, effective tabbing through a website is what people do instead. Because it is hard to, you know, drag your mouse or or get in the right spot.
Um, s- some sites uh I have found um that are ADA friendly. Um, they have like a a way that you can um have the text be read to you. Will that be an option? Oh.
That's a good, good question, like with a, like a plugin over the top. I've seen, yeah, like a little thing where you can even choose if you're dyslexic and it'll change the typography. That is something that, yeah, we'll want to look into as well. Um, we're going to make sure, I mean, talking about like tabbing order, that is going to be addressed in the way when it's developed too. We're going to make sure that everything meets the WICAG um two point one double A standards. Part of that is just making sure that like proper labeling of kind of in the backend so that the tab order matches up and.
I also wonder too if um could, I noticed that the services, the list of of oh, what's there is not necessarily in alphabetical order. Um, maybe that might help someone who, you know, categorizes things in their mind of something that they're familiar with to have it in alphabetical order.
Uh huh. Yeah, that's a good, I mean, we've, we've thought about alphabetizing like with lists and stuff in general, even in our menu too. Kind of going back and forth on like alphabetizing versus ranking more common services and stuff higher up.
Right.
But I think that's a, that's a good thing to keep in mind and I think we'll want to look at. And one thing I wanted to, I was going to close with too, but I want to reiterate too throughout is even after we launch the site, we intend to continue to work with the community. And we want to hear, hear feedback and gather um and kind of be proactive about that. But really want to open the door for anyone who does have, like find issues and come across things after we launch and continuing into the future to bring them forward so that we can continue to iterate the site. And that's actually one real like big reason why we're actually redesigning the site. Not just to make it look nicer, but more importantly, we're going to have like full control over the site. So if we do hear things, we can make those changes and we have the capability in-house to do that. Currently, we're, the vendor that we work with, we have to go to them when there's issues that that come up and are often charged a lot of money for some of these things.
I'm gonna add one more thing to the list of services. So it, we, we don't see it in in as it's functioning, but um, you know, for somebody scrolling down the list, you're hovering over and then things start changing color and then they kind of like move like this. That might even be enough flashing to to be a problem. So, yeah.
I'll see her, or even those who have vestibular challenges due to some vision.
Okay.
Vision impairments. Um, is there an opportunity to roll this out in a beta version and test it, the control group?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Great question too. Yeah, and that's one thing. Yeah, I wanted to talk with you all as well too. Um, so we will be doing, um, the dates are a little um squishy right now. But towards the end of December, um, or early January, we're going to start user acceptance testing. So the design firm will be releasing it to us to roll through it, make sure like links are are working. But we also are hoping that we can get people, others, anyone to like look through, like for kind of whatever reasons, kind of do kind of, once it's built out, look for these issues too. Versus like just a prototype and there's certain things that we can talk about and the way it's just designed. But once it's actually built, and one thing in particular is getting somebody with a screen reader to actually go through it too. And see like if the backend really does match up with what is being presented to us as meeting those WICAG guidelines.
That's really great. And I imagine you probably have hundreds of thousands of pages that you have to sort through.
Not thousands, but it's a, it's a big project. Yeah, we've, um, there are currently a little over eight hundred pages, which is, it's still a lot. It's in the hundreds of thousands, but it's a, it's a lot. Um, and we've, with this kind of redesign um piece in tandem with it, we've been working with all of the departments going through kind of department section by section of our site to really audit and pare down content. And kind of one of the pieces like for accessibility too is like rewrite that content at um like an eighth grade reading level so that it's more understandable to the general community. It has a lot of benefits. I mean, it just makes it easier for everyone to digest that content. Translation tools do a better job when when the content is.
Plain, plain language.
Plain language, get rid of jargon, acronyms. Um, and also make sure that the pages have like a logical order to them. We found going through this this project that there's a lot of pages on our site that were first built years ago and they continue to be updated. And there just hasn't been the bandwidth or like time to take a step back and and say like, does all the information presented on this page still make sense? As we keep adding to it, is it still, does it become like a Frankenstein or is it? Can we go in? And that's, that's really what we're doing and hoping to get through a lot of that before launch. There will still be some pieces to the site that we're going to have to go through after launch. But we're going to be continuing that project. And again, as I mentioned before, plan on continuing to revisit. Once we launch pages, we want to hear back like a month, two, three months after. Are these pages working after we've redesigned them?
So in January, do you plan on rolling out the whole site or just like a large portion of it?
It'll be the whole site.
Okay.
Too. Yeah, so we will have a majority of the content gone through in this process that I just outlined. Um, but there will be some pages that um in working with the vendor, when they migrate, they'll just migrate over the content and there'll be kind of an automated system to do that where it's, it's a big project that they're undertaking to just kind of map our current information and make sure that it fits into new templates. So that's part of that user acceptance testing that we'll be doing for the month of January before launch, just to make sure that as it was brought in, does everything still fit in that that order?
I like what you have so far. It um looks really clean and um I do appreciate some blank space.
Uh huh, yeah.
That's helpful. Sometimes less is more.
Yep. Yeah, that's what we found. I mean, blank space, things like particularly with the content update work that we're doing, pairing down the amount of text that we have too. So there's not so many text walls and breaking up content so that there's headings in between and utilizing and looking for opportunities for imagery and stuff to help. Um, or like or iconography or whatever to help break up the content.
Supports the the narrative of whatever, whatever the page is on too. Which is helpful. People uh who prefer pictures over over words.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate, yeah, appreciate that feedback. Um, yeah, and ta- talking about like typography, where some considerations we're making, like the minimum font size will be sixteen pixels high. We're increasing the line spacing too, so it's easier to move from one line to the next. Um, so that'll be one point five times in between. Um, so that's kind of like best practices to meet that. Um. That's here. I talked about uh logical heading hierarchy too, as we're going through the content. Make sure that everything follows, particularly for screen readers, but also also for sighted visitors too, to have that kind of a visual hierarchy to help keep people, keep the content organized for people. But then for screen readers, if it's properly tagged, it's like a heading of one, two, three, four, in the right order, they'll be able to navigate through that content. Um, let's see, just quickly kind of scroll through this, can be using icons again here. Lot of white space.
Jacob, I have a question. Um. Uh, how will the site translate to a mobile device from um um like a PC?
Great, great question. And that is exactly what I was going to try and go to next. Um, yeah, we're, we're taking a uh mobile first approach here too. We're finding that, looking at analytics, about half of our visitors are on mobile devices too. And that's just increased. I've seen it over the nearly ten years that I've been here. I've seen that increase from, I think, when I started. It was probably like eighty, twenty. Um, and it's just, and that's just another way to make it more um accessible to different communities too. You don't have to purchase a a desktop or a, you know, PC or laptop. Everybody has smartphones.
Helpful for visitors, um, people who are recreating in our community and.
Right.
Yeah, just pull, being able to pull up the site to get the information that they need. So thank you.
And I'm, yeah, I'm particularly happy with the way it presents on mobile too, at least the way they've, they've outlined here. But yeah, so they're, they've designed um desktop version, a tablet version, as well as a mobile version too.
Um, back at the um, the the mobile version, um, did it have like uh slides where you could slide the page um over? Did I see that?
Yep.
Are you right there?
Yeah, so we have, um, the functionality will be such that you can slide on the cards or it'll also have these these arrows that you can click to navigate through too.
Amanda, did you have a question?
I'm gonna head back to desktop. I think that that actually covers, I think, pretty much everything that I wanted to show. Is there anything else that you all wanted to see on the prototype? So that was the homepage. I can, actually, I could hop over to one. There, there's some bugs in the prototyping tool. We're not going to have text overlapping like that. Um, like moving around when you hover, but um we, they did build out like what a landing page might look like. And actually, um, I think this is a good example of things that as we went through the design iterations, there's been, there were a few, like five, five rounds of designs that we went through with the um with the company that we're working with. And accessibility has been top of mind throughout because Sandro's been part of the review team here and we had like a lot of kind of internal staff looking at it too. And pieces came up from a lot of different people too that we wanted to make sure were addressed. One thing in particular, this development permitting heading was originally spread across this um just color box and onto the image. And we found that it was just not, not legible. So we had them, them kind of bring it back. So this is just on here and easier to read. And that there were some other things with just kind of heading structure that were a little more challenging too, but. Bottom. We do have some text over imagery. That's huge. And you can see there's not enough contrast right here too. We'll continue to work with the vendor to make sure a lot of the stuff is addressed. Part of it will, like, if we do do text over imagery, we want to be really cognizant of like that there's enough contrast between that image and not busy, like busyness in that image too. So make sure there's just like only sky and not clouds and stuff like that that are compete, going to compete with the white, the text.
Right. I mean, I'd actually be more concerned about the white on light blue text on that page. But again, we're seeing it there on the screen.
Yeah, and actually, as you know, we're talking about like, yeah, contrast. This is one piece that I I I took a look at the contrast ratio and the size of this text isn't big enough to meet adequate contrast. It's actually like three point one five percent or like two, one contrast right here too. So that is, this is one, one particular element that we will be going back to them to address.
What about the um, best practices for all capitals?
Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to address that. I know, we've, we've gotten through this before. But yeah, I, I know, I've seen this and I think that is something that we're, we're going to have to look at as well.
All caps might go out of favor.
Especially if there's not enough spaces, the space between each word, it kind of combines into one.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah, yeah.
A little more clarification on that, like what what are the the issues that you're seeing with with all caps that?
Um it's hard for people that um the cognitive issues are um to look at it because it looks like one word. Or like it all meshes together, especially if there's not enough space between each word.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Also, word recognize, recognition is actually better for everybody in that case versus all caps.
Yeah, no, that's good feedback. I've even, I've even heard for like some at least older screen readers too. Sometimes the screen reader won't read it as a word, it'll be like O N L I N E. So, yeah, thank you for calling that out, we'll we'll make sure that that's addressed for a number of reasons. Okay, with that, I'll stop sharing that and. That's enough, that's enough feedback from everyone.
That's what we'd like to see, and I'd love to see building permit uh pages put in plain English.
Yeah, I I mean, I would love to talk more about that, we did do kind of initial pass at trying to do that as well. A year ago, at least, there we found that there was no place on our site that actually outlined like what is the permitting process? Somebody, you you had to just know which division does the particular piece of the of the process. And so we tried to clean that up, but that's one, that's one area where.
It's con- it's complicated, yeah.
Yeah, it's got, that's, that's what we heard from. The community development staff, it's like, it's just so hard to find like one size fits all kind of outline. But yeah, I'd love to, yeah, continue that conversation, actually.
Effort and we know it's a huge effort, a huge, huge effort.
Yeah, I I mean, but it's, yeah, the job's never done, and again, we want to keep getting this feedback so that we can continue to refine it. So, yeah, with that, um it's my turn to listen, I want to hear, you you've you've had some great feedback so far too. But if there's anything else too, um anything like issues you've seen with our site or other sites that you. Or like what you've seen here that you'd also wanna wanna share um that we haven't talked about yet too. I'd like to open up the floor.
I noticed that um and this is a trend, I think, in web design. Uh no more menus, you know, open, especially multiple different, you know, levels or menus. And then the redundancy of then the icons at the same time, so that just, that seems to be the direction that web design is going. So um I haven't tested myself, like, you know, how well those collapsed menus work these days. I don't know, it'd be interesting, you have stats on that? But I think it's interesting.
No, but that, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So navigation is one piece that I've personally found and and I've heard like it can be challenging with those. That kind of persistent, like at least what I found to be challenging on our site. Um is that persistent menu that's the same across every page on our site. And it really, the particular challenge that we have as a city is, we're, I don't know, twenty different departments. Or a lot of different departments that do very different things. And having a menu that like includes all of those different things becomes clutter almost. If you're, if you're going to like a water services page or whatever to pay your bill. All that, the rest of that menu doesn't mean anything to you too. So I've found that 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 could almost be, at least in that, if you're on our site for that particular service. Then you don't necessarily, it's, it can help to pare down just that extra content to have to sift through or look through. To find what you're looking for, so where. I'm hoping to continue, and we're gonna see some more page templates built out. To see what that menu structure looks like, cause as you saw, we had that collapsed menu um for kind of just global navigation. So it's still there and it actually with this current menu, um in building it out, we found that there are more menu options. That we can have on there than than we currently can do without like just flooding the page every time you hover it.
Telephone book kind of thing.
Right, right.
That works for an ADHD brain to have decision fatigue and too many choices, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and we tried to have, we worked with a uh with a design firm to help try and. Bring focus to where you're at within that menu too. So as you open it up, that uh it's kind of like in that services section too, the other menu items gray out a little bit. So it helps draw attention to that specific piece. Contextual cues, exactly.
This little world here, yeah, yeah, really important.
Yeah, but what I would like to see too is like then on the whatever page you're on, make sure that there is kind of a menu structure to navigate. That page and its subpages too, so then it's really just the menus. So just focused on the where you're at on the site and just kind of getting to the services that you need to. So you don't have to, you can ignore everything else, but open it up if you want to get to, you know, fire department page if you're on the police page. Something like that, example, but that's a great, yeah, a great question and consideration.
Well, um Jacob, thank you so much for coming and uh presenting um on this project and including us. Uh with feedback, um I'd love to hear more um December when you plan on. Having it beta tested and.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, keep us included, I'm 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 positive that members of COBAC would like to surf through and.
Cool, yeah.
Your problem, yeah.
No, I I appreciate it, again, yeah, we really want to hear, we want to hear from everyone. So I I really appreciate you offering to do this too, and we'll we'll certainly keep everyone in touch um as as we move through this. And yeah, especially like as, like, once we get that built site and we can actually click through everything and have it operating in the way that we expect it to. Because as you saw, there's, this is just the prototyping tool and there's issues and stuff and it's not fully built out, but. Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for being such a great colleague in accessibility and Ken and Carrie online, I think that we've been so many iterative processes and across the board. And it's always focused on like, when can we get in front of COBAC, so thanks for that partnership and um all your efforts on that.
Yeah, you know, thank you, I appreciate it, I think you're the first group outside of like our internal staff who've actually seen this.
We are pretty, pretty prestigious that way.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Carrie. All right.
Thank you, Ken.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to our next uh item in the agenda. And um like to um welcome Bob Townsend from CET Transportation. To update us on what's happening. Thank you for being here, Bob.
Thank you for having me. Uh Bob Townsend, Cascades East Transit uh Director, very, very tall, uh white male, uh follicle challenged. I wish by choice, but uh. Um so thanks for having me, I I wanted to make sure, certainly uh Derek's in the room, so I can't talk bad about him. But um with his, with his departure from CET, moving over to the city of Bend, happy for him. Um I'll be, I'll be sitting in on COBAC meetings uh for the future and even beyond, I think this'll just be. Um a um a meeting that I intend regularly. But here uh today specifically to address some of the issues around fairs, uh also answer any questions around. Um transit services in the end or the uh broader uh central Oregon uh area. Um certainly as a follow up to last meeting, you know, some of the information will be the same stuff I shared. But some of it will be uh additional based on some additional questions we got uh at the end of that meeting and then in some follow ups.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Um so the first slide, I just wanted to um wanted to share, you know, there's a lot of confusion around what the fares. Were pre pandemic and what they will be now, and so this is the pre pandemic fare sheet. And it, I apologize, we don't have it electronically anywhere, I had have to cut and paste it for the size. But the the main points uh for awareness today are the the Bend fixed route uh fare. And these were approved in twenty seventeen, so you know, eight years ago, a lot, lot has changed uh in that, in that timeframe. A dollar fifty per trip for the Bend fixed route, Bend dial a ride was two fifty. Um and then there were some reductions um in place that were for low income, Bend dial a ride was reduced to a dollar twenty five. Low income only, um and then Bend fixed route was reduced to seventy five cents a ride. And so those, those are the three main things I just want to draw awareness to when we show the new fares and and how they um relate to that. And just also note the Community Connector routes, uh this is, you know, Bend to Le Pine, Bend to Sisters, Bend to Redmond, Redmond, Madras, Madras, Warm Springs. Prime for all those, um the the two thousand seventeen fair was three dollars and seventy five cents per trip. Uh next slide, please. So um just outreach wise and you know, not to get into a lot of detail, but so. This was a big undertaking to go back to fares, you know, I mean, ninety nine point nine percent of transit agencies in the US charge fares. It's not unusual, it was unusual for an entity like us to go away from fares during the pandemic. When most went back to it within eight months, a year, two, in some cases, to be, you know, four and a half years removed. And still uh no fares, and so because of that, generally, uh every transit agency has to have a policy. On how you implement fare changes um that meet a certain threshold, and generally, it's a thirty day notice. The board, you know, it's going from a dollar seventy five to two dollars, it's not a lot of public outreach because they're minor changes. What we wanted to do this time was because it is such a change from going away from fare, not a change from where we were. In two thousand twenty, pre pandemic to now, but since we have not been um assessing fares for so long. We wanted to make a broader approach on public outreach, so all of ours really ranged in this ninety day plus. We knew we were taking information to the board on August eighth, all the information we took to the board on August eighth was presented to them back in March and April. To get initial feedback, just so we were all comfortable with what we were sharing to the public. Was more than enough information had been vetted some, and so, you know, just as a highlight of some of the areas where we, we went through this. Just to really ensure that if you ride the bus, you knew it was coming, if you were in the public an interest. And you um more than likely, you had the opportunity to hear about it or weigh feedback, and then of course, we had a public. Comment process through our website, through at meetings and and things, and we generated some um records based on that. But I just wanted to share, this isn't the normal when we have a fare change policy. But since this is a a a pretty drastic change, we wanted to make sure we were really um thorough in it.
Bob, this is Amanda Hemmerich, can you help me with a couple of the acronyms?
Yes, sorry.
What's RPTAC?
RPTAC is a Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee, so that's the committee that we take things through.
And that's who you're talking about is the board that, is that?
No, the board is the, our central uh Oregon Intergovernmental Council Board. So RP, the way it works for us is we take things to RP TAC, they provide recommendations. They're not an approval disapproval, but they're a recommendation, and so they provide recommendations, then we go to the board for approval.
Okay, cool, thank you, and then what's STIF?
Uh Statewide Transportation Investment Fund.
Thank you.
And that's the transit, the payroll tax. Okay, um next slide. So these are the fares um that were approved by the, or recommended by RP TAC back in uh April. And then again, we had another August meeting with RP TAC just to confirm their final support. And then this is what was approved by the COIC Board um as of August eighth. We have a unique motion in how we implemented it, which I'll talk about a little bit on the the time of implementation. Um is at at the director's discretion a little bit, but these will be the fares once we go to uh implementation. And so what I want to draw your attention to here is, you know, Bend fixed route was a dollar fifty in two thousand seventeen, up through twenty. Obviously, and it's two dollars now, um which, you know, is a, is a percentage increase. It's, you know, comparable, um not very much. The um the rural Community Connectors were three seventy five before, they're only two dollars now, so they actually have gone down. Part of this is, we want to have a consistency with the fares, make it easier for people, eliminate confusion around, what, this was a dollar fifty, right? This is three seventy five, and so this may change in the future, but for now, it's one price uh basically for everything that's FTA governed. And FTA governed is the top, and we have to abide by specific Federal Transit Administration rules. Direct routes are unique, that we don't have to follow FTA rules, we have other guidelines to follow, but those, those are why those have unique. Um fares, but the other one to draw attention to is before Bend Dial-A-Ride was. Um two fifty uh for a ride, one twenty five for low income. Now it's two dollars for the first ten rides in a month, four dollars for uh anything um after that. Um as you can see, Redmond Dial-A-Ride, Rural Dial-A-Ride, uh we have separate categories for those. Bend Dial-A-Ride is the only dial-a-ride service for us that's a paratransit, means you have to qualify in order to get those rides. In our rural areas, Redmond, um you know, Sisters, Madras, et cetera, those are, those are currently free for all right now, just a taxi service. I'm gonna pause here, uh go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. This is Liz Dethan Martin, um just a a quick question on the two tier of fees for Bend Dial-A-Ride. Seems like the more you need it, you're penalized.
Yeah, so generally, you know, the recommendation was to just make it four dollars. Uh industry wide, FTA has a rule that it can only be double the cost of the fixed comparable fixed route fee. And they put that in place because, you know, for us, a fixed route in Bend, and it it depends on the day and the route. But generally costs us between eight and fifteen dollars per ride. Uh Bend Dial-A-Ride costs us twenty five to forty five dollars a ride. And so generally, you're trying to recover a few more dollars for the more expensive. The other thing that's important, especially in a paratransit service, and I'm gonna talk paratransit service in Bend versus Redmond Dial-A-Ride. I think you can kind of imagine the issues when you have a dial-a-ride system that's just free to anyone, why would they use the fixed route? When we'll pick them up their door and take them and things, so that that has its own challenge. But paratransit wise, you want people to use the fixed route as much as possible. We want someone to make a determination that, hey, this, I can use the fixed route for this versus I'm always gonna take the door to door service. And we have, we have members on RP TAC who um are in wheelchairs and they use both categories. Because, you know, they want to make sure people have capacity for both. We have some who just call Dial-A-Ride every time because it's free and it's door to door, even though they have the capability to go a block in certain cases. And so you want to have that price differentiation, not just because one costs more, but to encourage people as much as possible to make that conscientious choice. About, hey, I can use the fixed route for this service instead of calling, cause every time someone uses the Dial-A-Ride, there's a potential that. Someone else who really needs to can, because we're limited on.
So you'd like us to think about it as the first ten rides are discounted?
Correct, yes.
So I have a couple of follow up questions, Bob, and one is your comment about Redmond being more like a taxi service. And I look at it as a different perspective in terms of um, there's only two routes in in Redmond. And so people who live out on Hemholtz, you know, they rely on um. Uh the Dial-A-Ride service to get them to a hub. And so I wouldn't necessarily qualify that as a taxi service and more of um inadequacy. Of um of routes. Um and the second thing is um those with disabilities. Prefer, prefer the paratransit um for door to door for safety, safety concerns. Um and um, yeah, so um. I think I need to process.
Couple of things, I use the word taxi service so people can understand how it works, it's basically you call up, we show up, but it, there's no qualifiers. And to your point, how does the flex route work in that situation where they're both free? What would you read, people won't use the flex route because dialer ride is free there, so that's this challenge cycle that. And then we want to add more flex routes, but we can't add flex routes until we charge for dial a ride, or else people will just continue to use. So it's a cycle, I I don't mean to, um it it's gen- generally an easier way to explain it. You are correct, a majority of people prefer door to door, but that doesn't mean that there aren't options. And that, you know, we have a perfect example with Jordan who is on RP TAC and he, he'll have more fixed route rides. And he, he'll have more fixed route rides than he will Dial-a-Ride because he's making conscientious choices about what works best for him and what, what he wants to use for the system. And so we just want to continue to have those decisions there. It doesn't mean someone ever has to use the fixed ride. They can use Dial-a-Ride, but that's generally why in the industry and why the FTA allows this double price of your fixed route fare.
Um, uh, another, uh, question that I have is, um, before, um, uh, Dial-a-Ride, whether, um, Bend, Redmond, or Rural had, um, an annual pass. And I see that that's, doesn't exist anymore. And that might be problematic for, um, folks who are service, who have received, uh, services, waivered services through the county, um, or, uh, through full access through the brokerage. Um, so I was wondering if you could shed some light on, on that and, um, how we can address, um, that deficit because that tells me that you might actually lose ridership.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm not quite sure on how that would lose ridership, um, as far as most of those situations are reimbursed. Um, uh, fares. And so we, we've, we've worked with a couple of providers on, yeah, we're gonna assess our bill, billing is a little bit different, so people aren't out of pocket. But generally, that won't reduce any ridership.
Um, have you, okay.
Uh, this is John. I have a question if I could butt in.
Yes.
Uh, I guess my question is, um, how often do you do audits of the Dial-a-Ride system to, to figure out how many or what percentage of rides are what you deem abuse? Um, and what kind of numbers are we talking about? Uh, are there regular audits for this? Also, if I understand correctly, looking at the transit map, it seems like Redmond has fixed routes, not flex routes. And aren't you required to provide free Dial-a-Ride systems within a certain amount of distance from fixed routes?
The, the Redmond route, uh, or I'll go backwards in yours. The Redmond route system is a flex route. You can call in and we'll pick up variations based on the flex route. If you do have a fixed route system, you don't, you don't have to provide free paratransit, but you have to provide an equal, equivalent, um, paratransit services within three quarters of a mile uh, of that route. And so the example in Bend here is technically, we only have to map out every single fixed route and go, you know, a little bit beyond those routes and provide paratransit service. Where in most cases, we were providing paratransit services to the entire city limits, um, based on that. As far as the abuse of it, we, we certainly don't audit the Bend paratran, or Bend paratransit. You have to qualify. There's no, you know, a ride is a ride if they schedule and they meet it. What we see now because of the free system is someone takes a ride to go to breakfast at eight, comes home at nine thirty, takes another ride at eleven to go to the grocery store, comes home at twelve thirty, right? And I'm not saying that has fault or anything. That may be the only thing that works for their schedule. But we have a really high number daily scheduling by people because it's, it's free and they're, they can do that. What we're hoping is people take a little more diligence in their ride selection and be like, hey, I'm gonna combine trips here or there. That way it'll allow us to do what we call as will-call trips on the same day. Right now you have to schedule twenty-four hours in advance and we're packed. We think if people make, you know, better choices, it may not, you know, there may be someone who has thirty trips a week and they're still thirty because that's the only thing. But even if that went from thirty to twenty-five, that's five additional trips that week that we could have given to a will-call that came up on an emergency. Hey, my doctor's appointment changed. I need to get there. They can call in the morning and we can schedule. Right now we have to limit those because it's too hard to, to schedule based on the amount of volume we're seeing.
Um, uh,
So it kind of sounds like the abuse is just sort of a feeling because it's a free service. It's not really, uh, uh, something that you've quantified. Is that correct?
Well, we, we have no way to know what of, you know, we're just looking at numbers of daily trips, right? There's an average in the industry on how much a person generally uses Dial-a-Ride. If we're exceeding that number, then we're making that intrinsic. But we're certainly not gonna ask someone if that's a wasted or abused trip. We're just going by total numbers.
So, um, real quick.
There is no thing that you can point to that shows that there's playground abuse of the system?
So without getting into specifics, so in Bend, you qualify. There's no, there, there's nothing that, there's no limit on trips. Some entities have, you can only schedule forty trips a month, right? We do not have that. You could schedule five hundred as long as there are twenty-four hours. That's paratransit. On the other Dial-a-Ride services in communities, we can look at the Dial-a-Ride. And like in Redmond in the mornings, we're taking kids to school every day. That, that's probably not what Dial-a-Ride was based for, right? When they have alternative things. And so that's how we get to this without recording data. We just know, you know, based on the call schedules and, and that it's the same ride every morning to school when the flex route covers the same variation, um, but they choose Dial-a-Ride. Those what is what we would consider as something that is less beneficial for the system than someone, you, you know, who may need it more.
This is Liz Woodfin. Um, thank you, Bob, for explaining that. And thank you, John, for those questions. Um, I, I, my hackles kind of raise when the word abuse comes out because, um, we're talking about a necessary piece of infrastructure. Um, and, uh, it's what's been offered to people. And, um, so my recommendation would be to look at increasing, um, routes because of the two routes that are in, um, Redmond. And also considering making Redmond also the application, um, the same application, which I do have, uh, issues with the application piece, um, in making referrals. Uh, so, um, yeah, those are my two bits. And then Carl has had his hand raised for quite some time. And so I'd like him to, um, be able to address.
Could I jump in on Carl? So for your Redmond, and, and that's why we have different price points on this. I just want to make sure it's captured. At some point in the future, Redmond will go to paratransit qualified or others because we don't have that route. So it'll be four dollars for paratransit. It could be ten for non-parat, just to ensure, you know, that's how some, when you start Dial-a-Ride, when you start transit, and so the chicken and egg there is do we go to six routes tomorrow and cut Dial-a-Ride way back and tell people they have to use? Probably not. You know, it's this combination of how do we, how do we use both?
Yeah, and I imagine that would take some time to kind of flesh out of what that means. But I, I strongly feel that it, it's not a matter of abuse. It's what is, is being provided to people and, um, useful to them. Um, especially if they live a mile, um, away from an actual stop. And those routes are, are pretty limited. I mean, they touch like high points. Um, and I don't want to stress too much about, uh, about Redmond. Um, and I get what you're saying. Um, but I, I, I struggle with the word abuse because I don't think that that is abuse. I think it's a, a matter of, um, providing access. It's an access issue, not an abuse issue. Carl?
Um, thanks. I was gonna say something kind of similar to what Liz said. Um, yeah, I, I think that's, uh, you know, if you're seeing people using the system, um, a lot in Redmond, the Dial-a-Ride system, that's sort of an indication of, of gaps in the, in the fixed route system, right? Um, and I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that, you know, there's, there's plans to increase that in the future, the number of fixed routes, and also to, uh, to go to a, a Dial-a-Ride, uh, paratransit sys, system like we have in Bend. So, um, I'd love, love to hear you talk, talk more about that when you talk publicly about this, how this, you know, indicates a need for more transit. Because it's great, you know, the, people are using it. That's, you guys are doing your job, right? And, um, serving a need.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I don't mean to cross over with the, I, I know I'm very sensitive to the word abuse on this. I can also tell you, you know, I can see records of people. I can't share them with you. If they are, every single morning, live on, within a block of the flex route and are traveling to a spot on the flex route, have never used the flex route and only use Dial-a-Ride four times a day for the same trip. That is misuse of a system that doesn't allow us to serve other people who may be two miles away to your point. And so those are the data points in, in Redmond that we're talking about and that we're trying to, you know, it's both, it's ours, our issue too about, you know, raising awareness on the flex route. But generally, you can't have a flex route system that's free and a Dial-a-Ride system is free and hope people use the flex route, which is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I see it also, um, a, also as like punishing someone who, who lives beyond the pale. And I guess the, um, case manager and me would be to, um, if you can contact that person or those people who are using the service that way and finding out what their needs are, and then using that information to adjust and make changes, I think is more valuable than anything that we could say in this room. Um, because they're the one with lived experience and have to function and get to places.
Yeah, and, and that's how we make decisions. The, the reality in Redmond, and I know we're city of Bend here, but is the Redmond flex route is not sustainable. It costs us about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per ride right now with the usership. And so we either make drastic changes in Redmond to, you know, improve both and systems, or one of them goes away because our, our funding is limited and, and that's not sustainable. So there's a lot of choices to be made in Redmond over the next year that their council will be weighing in on as well.
That's good to hear. Um, uh, Stephanie had a, a question and then, um, Liz Deacon Martin had, had a question. And so after those questions, we need to wrap up this, uh, agenda item and move on.
I just wanted to ask a, a clarifying question. I'll try to keep it, um, short. So if I understand correctly, back in two thousand seventeen, when you did your rate increases and you had a fair schedule, you did have monthly and annual passes for the Dial-a-Ride service and now you don't. So I'm just curious, what is the justification for dropping that completely?
Yeah, I mean, or a couple of things. We had not necessarily monthly, we had per trips, max more like, they buy a twenty-ticket package for a certain amount, right? Not ever a monthly or annual. And across the system in, in Oregon, of all the major providers, us, Chariots, Road Valley, Triment, uh, Lane, only one of them has an annual pass for Dial-a-Ride because it's very hard to assess where that sweet spot is for it. Um, and so that's generally why you don't, because you, if you make it to what you think it could be, it's so exorbitantly high to cover potentially fifty trips a month. No one be using it. But then if you make it too small, it, it's just a very challenging thing. And again, it's around trying, we want to be economical as to this annual pass. We will work out an agreement with an individual who has a, a third-party provider reimbursement to just be like, this is your annual estimated, right? That, we, we have that discretion and that's what we worked out behind the scenes on how we'll address a couple of those things. We're just not ready this first year to be like, it's two hundred and twenty-five, it's five hundred and seventy-five. Cause usually it would be double your fixed route annual pass, which is six hundred. So a twelve hundred dollar Dial-a-Ride pass is really not realistic.
No. So what about just a quick follow-up question then? Doing a twenty punch, you know, pass?
Yeah.
It just for case management, it just makes it so much easier. It's like, okay, this person on my caseload is gonna get, uh, twelve, twenty, twenty pass ticket things.
Yeah, instead of doing the tickets, because all that is hard to administer, we're fine doing this individual thing, saying, hey, my person uses it thirty-five times. Can we make their, their bill behind the scene thirty-five times, you know, ten trips at two? We're, all of that is fine. But it's not, again, it's, the revenue is important. It's, you know, in excess of a million dollars. That pays for three or four more routes, right? I, I don't want to disregard, but a user paying twenty-five here versus thirty is not breaking us. It's more around making sure people are using transportation, getting the services they need. And at the same time, having a little bit in the back of their mind that the financials does impact choices and what's reasonable and what's not, and how can we assist in that?
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll try to be brief with total appreciation for the complexity of the many people you're trying to, um, uh, serve and address and budget issues and all of that. So, so my, my job is building websites, designing websites. And that's, you know, so I want to apply my, you know, our thinking. When, when somebody over and over and over has the same problem with our website or an application or whatever, we stop saying it's user error, right? We say, oh, the system isn't working. And so, yeah, it's just, it's, it's frustrating like so many other things. It's like, oh, it's a poor fit for people's, people's needs. Not so much misuse of the system. So, um, I know this is a huge issue, but I just, um, wanted to offer that.
And I agree with you. I think the difference here is free, it, it's a dollar to a dollar fifty, I agree a hundred percent. Free to something, that free word, we see it in a lot of areas. There's been a lot of studies on the transit. It just has a different moniker of how people use a free system, right? And, and so, you know, that's why we've started, I mean, these are relatively low rates compared to others, compared to our costs. Every other entity, transportation service provider in Oregon has supplemental funding except us. We have stiff and federal, everybody has it. So we, in essence, based on the percentages, should be higher, yet we're the same. And so I agree with you. We, we have a lot of improvement to make on our end. This is just, we think we need this in place. And just to close it here, because I, I know we're past time. But these, these fares are actually, you know, we actually think it'll improve some of the system because as part of it, we're using the fares to implement, um, an automated system where someone can use the computer. They can use a phone. They can schedule their routes without having to call the customer service. It'll come with, if they want to use their phone, they can see where the bus is instead of this having to stand out in the cold for it. So we, we, we think it's providing a lot more. And we actually think we can serve more people in Bend now with the fares, just for some of the reasons we talked about. And just the last thing, implementation. So implementation's not till January. We've been loose on the implementation thing because of some other issues with our contract provider here. And we don't want to start implementing fares and not be able to provide service. So it's gonna be January. December, everything will go live. So the transit pass, the fare, paper tickets, people will start to see how to use them and, and we'll have that. But the actual education on how fares, how people can sign up will start in October. So we still have time on all this, I, I, you know, to, to work some of the issues on the actual implementation of fares.
Okay. Well, Bob, thank you so much. Um, I, I feel like that this was a well-needed, uh, conversation. And, um, we, we hope that, uh, you return, um, next month and, um, that we continue, uh, continue, uh, grabbing, grabbing hold of, of topics and questions and, um, working through this, uh, with you and CET and COIC. So thank you.
No, I appreciate the time. I'm hap, you know, certainly I'll be back. I'm happy to meet individually too. It's a lot of details, right? It's a lot of information to talk through and get, you know, we, we, you know, we, we know there's a lot of variance across our users and trying to find one system that works for everybody is not realistic. But if we know some of the issues, we, we can tweak it here or there and, and make sure that we are improving our user experience. Thank you.
Well, I look forward to future conversations and, um, uh, that, it, this makes me hopeful. So thank you.
So Woodfin, this is Cassandra. May I ask that we just flip the next two items in order to accommodate a, a calendaring time schedule for one of our former Quebec members to be able to, to come chat with us for a minute?
Yes, I would love that. Derek, please come join us up front. Thank you so much. Derek, what are you doing over there? I have to say congratulations to Derek.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, just wanted to, it's Derek Hoffbauer, um, brown hair, blue shirt, uh, male. He/him pronouns. Um, yeah, I just wanted to take a second. Cassandra offered the opportunity to. He/him pronouns. Um, yeah, I just wanted to take a second and Cassandra offered the opportunity to uh, just show my appreciation for serving on this committee and as vice chair. Uh, this committee does so much great work in the, in the community and the role that I'm in. Um, there's a big intersection between safety, accessibility, filling in sidewalk gaps, connecting people to our public transit system. I just heard Bob talk about that. Um, and so I'm really excited about this new role and I'm just working with all the partners and the community members. You will see me here um, talking about a lot of different transportation projects with an accessibility focus. So I just let everyone know that I'm not the City of Bend. Bob's cringing back there. Um, I can feel it, I can feel it. Um, but it's like, it's a mobility programs manager.
Is it new?
Yes, this is a new role.
Just come in and like create that?
No, it was a part of Robin Lewis. She was an engineer and uh, she retired, and so it's part of her work. And then working on developing a, a robust travel options program for the City of Bend, improving mobility, increasing access to amenities. I'll be working with uh, Cascades Transit on the mobility hubs and help complete sidewalk gaps. So people can get to, to and from transit. Yeah, so I just wanted to appreciate being on this committee, um, events with the walk-by rollin', roll events. Um, you know, feel free to loop me in on those. I'm happy to, to participate and, and help plan those and coordinate them, so.
You're grateful for you.
Thank you.
Um, so many congratulations and best wishes on your new endeavor. And we look forward to collaborating and continue to collaborate. So.
Thanks for all your, all your collaboration. So appreciate it.
Thanks for sharing, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
All right.
Would you, uh, defer to you, Chair? Would you like to, for me to provide the rest of the update or move back to our COBAC work plan?
Um, I think that uh, I believe in you and we can get through it. Yes, please.
Well, with that vote of confidence, I'll launch into the manager update. Derek, thank you again for your, your time in COBAC, your service, your um, dedication. We will miss you, but we're glad that we will um, call you a partner in the work in a different capacity and welcome to the city. Um, I uh, have just a few updates for, for the group, and I know that we're a little behind time, so I will truncate them. Um, insofar as our leadership, um, we, we will hold that vice chair um, position vacant until our upcoming October election, um, where we'll both be electing a chair and a vice chair. So that's coming up in October. Um, which is wild to think that we are just a few months away from. So just on our radar of the future. And so thank you very much. And obviously, uh, Chair Woodfin, you've been phenomenal in your role. We'll see if, if folks are interested in running again or if there are uh, other interested uh, members of our committee who would like to move forward in the leadership capacity because this is a, a stellar group with so much um, experience and just fantastic people to work with. So that'll be opened up. Um, the second update I wanted to give is just to gauge, we don't need any feedback at this point, but I think we've had this conversation and call out um, to Whitney, especially in our last walk-in role of just that really great feedback and moment of uh, talking about the um, the impact on community of just gathering, right? So like, it was, it was not intended by the walk-in role, but it happened naturally. It's like gathering and talking about common, common um, challenges, common triumphs that we face in our particular community and the power of bringing people together. And so with that, we really have been thinking about having an accessibility mixer for people serving in different capacities in central Oregon generally, but specifically in Bend. And um, if we would like to do this in October, I think it'd be fantastic. But to see and gauge interest from COBAC members, if this is something you'd like to do, so we represent so many groups, it would just be great to have not a set agenda, but just the opportunity to organically engage and, and be together um, and, and enjoy the time. So I will send an email out to, to gauge some interest to start planning, um, party planning committee, which would be great. Um, and, and we'll move from there. Um, thank you to John and Carl um, for bringing up really important information about the um, e-bikes that you particularly may have seen uh, on our streets and our sidewalks, um, working with um, our parking uh, team. They've been great and supportive and looking at solutions. So I wanted to let you know that I, we do have emails out. We are working on that. And we will be able to present an update to COBAC in the September meeting. Um, and I'll send an email out if I get something ahead of time as well for all of you. But know that we are working um, in tandem with that and accessibility is front of mind. And even in the best-case scenario situations, like there can be a stray bike, which we know is really, can be frustrating and upsetting. And I know last night as I was walking, I was like moving one out of the right of way and also like twirling an umbrella. Um, it's, it's just, right? These, these are just things that we do in the evening. Um, so, um, with that, uh, I just wanted to particularly thanks Carl and, and John for, for bringing that up and being good partners in accessibility. And finally, just as a preview for our horizon of September, uh, we will have Ian Lighthizer joining us, our city attorney, to give us an update on the vehicle for hire conversation. And as Jacob kind of gave us a little overview, uh, we'll have a little bit of an update on the WICAG two-point-one double-A compliance. And no, that is not a cat hairball, that is the website. Uh, accessibility guidelines. So um, as some of us would be very familiar, the Department of Justice providing an update um, for, for particularly government on our recommendations and what we need to do for disabled community online specifically. And so it applies to both our website and also to our applications. So it's really great work. It's a citywide initiative. It's taken up a lot of my calendar. And there are so many great partners across the city working on it, and they're very anxious to come to present to you to talk a little bit more about the efforts that are underway to ensure that we are in compliance by uh, April twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-six, when our, when our deadline uh, dings. So with that, I will return back uh, Chair Woodfin to you um, for um, your work plan.
Thank you. Okey-dokey. Well, thank you, and you did it. So proud. Okay, um, yeah, let's uh, let's review the COBAC work plan. Um, we have welcoming week, COBAC volunteer support, calendar events. I think you've kind of touched on that um, already. And then um, upcoming fall lunch and learn, trauma-informed training. Um, Stephanie and Amanda.
Yeah.
Um.
We can make this very quick.
Do it.
I have not reached out.
Oh, that, that kind of quick.
It was that kind of quick.
So would, would we like to do a small uh?
Um, fall is technically next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, do you want to the three of us, or do you want me to just reach out to her?
Um, uh, this is Amanda. I think if you just reach out to her, I think that would be great. And then just let us know how that goes. Are you talking about reaching out to Jill?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Cassandra, did you have some thoughts?
Yeah, let's chat. Let's, if, if three of you are interested, again, open it up to the rest of COBAC, if other members are too, but I know you all are the, the um, we are moving us through trauma-informed training, so you are the group. So why don't the three of us, uh, four of us meet? And then we can uh, kind of figure out if that's a, a good route, if because of the timeline, we might want to consider some other alternatives. But we can, we can check in and then go from there. So.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, this is Amanda. I had some ideas around that too, maybe simplify this whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Okay. This is Chair Woodfin. Sounds like we have a plan. Um, and again, open invitation to other COBAC members. Um, if you'd like to be a part of that work group. We're gonna move into the COBAC roundtable. Um, we are um, short on time, so uh, if we could keep this item to about five minutes, that would be great. And I know there's probably been a lot of activity over our um, break. And so if you have highlights from your summer, please share.
This is Liz, Liz Deether Martin. I just want to say, I'm so excited. I was, I was passing by Miller Park and I saw a family um, uh, with one person in a wheelchair and they were getting ready to paddle. And the accessibility was the least of their problems. Uh, everything worked beautifully. They instantly recognized the transfer seat, the monkey bars to, to lower yourself down um, uh, into the boat. And um, it was a busy, happening, lively place and hooray.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yes, this is Amanda. I've noticed it multiple times and being utilized by the whole community. It's just a beautiful space.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Bravo, Ben Parks and Rec and um, our very own Ian. Uh, okay, anything else? Any highlights online? Carl?
Uh, I'm here in Portland, Maine, and uh, uh, every time I'm back here visiting my folks, I'm grateful that we don't have brick sidewalks in Bend, a very old, old city. And rolling down a sidewalk here, which is also a very, very hilly city, is like um, like surfing over a very rough and undulating wave. So we're lucky.
This is Amanda. Um, I am, I want to share that I'm Diversibility, which is the nonprofit I founded and I'm the executive director of, we are, we ended or ending our Medicaid-funded programs because they're not financially sustainable. And um, those will be ended October fifth for sure. Um, and then we're, and those, everybody we're serving is being transferred. It's so far, it's really seamless process, which is beautiful. Um, but I just recently accepted a position as Director of Operations with Bend Family Friends, which is a um, a fairly new um, residential that they own a, a company that runs residential twenty-four-seven group homes, um, which I never thought I would do, because I, but uh, or be involved in twenty-four-seven uh, residential care. But uh, as a leader in that um, organization, I'm hopeful that we can continue and maybe provide some role modeling for how twenty-four-seven should look. So, um, yeah, I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
And I'll still be running Diversibility, just we have, well, uh, our original programs, so not as, they're not Medicaid-funded. Now I'm looking for grant money. So thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for all of the work that you have done in our community and the folks that you've served and supported over the years, and we appreciate you so very, very much.
Thank you.
And so, thank you for all the work that you've done with Diversibility and the work that you continue to do. And congratulations, looking forward in this new future and new role that you'll be stepping in. And I know that you're gonna be amazing.
Thank you. There's a lot of anxiety. Going in, diving in.
Yeah, this is John, Halon. Um, I, I would like to end on a good note, but I just feel like I have to, have to say, um, I don't, I don't understand this, these claims of abuse from CET when there's no verifiable proof that has been presented about it. Um, a public transit system should be encouraging public transit, not restricting it. And I hope that this is not actually gonna happen. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh, we appreciate you voicing your concerns um, and posing questions. Um, and I'm hopeful um, to have continued conversations with CET and um, looking forward and finding solutions and for COBAC to um, make recommendations um, in the best interests of, of, of uh, those in our community. So, and thank you, John, for um, being a, um, a key um, member in that. And um, and asking questions and being present at meetings. Um, I voice my personal uh, appreciation towards you and admiration and also appreciation from uh, COBAC. So thank you. Um, okay, we've got about five minutes um, to talk about agenda setting. Um, Cassandra did mention a few things that will be on next month's agenda. Is there any other topic or area of concern that we should bring forward or area of celebration that we should address next month?
This is Amanda. Did we talk about welcoming week? Like, are we, what's happening with that? Can we get an update?
Yeah, that's a great, I'm gonna go back a couple of slides if that's okay. This is Cassandra. So there, there are two calls for volunteers right now. So on September thirteenth, there is the Culture Jam. Uh, and September twentieth, there's the Central Oregon Health and Wellness Fair, and both of those events um, are seeking volunteers. So if COBAC members are interested and would like to volunteer, I'm not sure at this point what exactly it entails, but we can get more details. Those are the two opportunities that are available. And the full list of all of the events are about to be posted to the City of Bend's website. And so I will send those out as soon as they are published. There is a huge wealth of exciting, um, diverse uh, welcoming and inclusive um, programming, and also many of the events are family-friendly. And so as many COBAC members as, as you'd like and can join, can be a part of it in the, the culturally celebratory and welcoming nature of welcoming week uh, as it is specifically for our uh, migrant and refugee population. So those are the two opportunities that are there. Um, and then I think in lieu of scheduling that kind of accessibility mixer during welcoming week, we've looked to bump that for October. So um, we will not be hosting anything ourselves, but again, the volunteer opportunities exist in those two, two dates. Um, uh, and also just the, the joy of attending these events as a COBAC member representing, so.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Oh, yeah. Sorry for not um, clearing that up earlier.
Okay, anything else that we should um, highlight for September's COBAC meeting? Going once, going twice, close. All right. Um, the next COBAC meeting will be held September twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-five, from one to two-thirty P M. I hope to see you there, either online or in chambers. Um, I would like to thank all of our speakers today and um, presentations. Um, I would like to adjourn our COBAC meeting two minutes early at two-twenty-eight. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.